All right, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock and we are on air, so I will call our meeting to order. This is our regular City Council meeting of October 26, 2021. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone is able, please stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item is our open forum, and I will pass it to our Executive Assistant Kelly Nguyen to talk about how people can participate in the open forum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We always encourage residents to participate live at our in-person meetings. You can show up to our meeting and comment to the council. You can also call into meetings during the council meeting at (612) 861-0651, and you can state your comments for council. You can also email me ahead of time at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov, and your comments can be read by a staff person. You can also leave me a message, and you can have your comments read by a staff person, and you can call (612) 861-9711. Again, we always take calls for meetings, and you can call (612) 861-0651 to comment during a live meeting. And I do have one person on the line, Julie Danielson, and I'm going to pack for her.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Danielson. I live at 6945 Stevens Avenue, and I thank you so much for allowing me to participate this way. A dear City Council, I want to express my concern over the rainbow-colored roundabout at 67th and Lyndale. Let me give you some context for my comments. While I understand and appreciate that the intentions of the council and Arts Commission was to encourage people to be part of the LGBTQ community, I would encourage you to think of the broader community as well. The rainbow flag symbol is also used by the Rainbow Coalition, a political arm in this community, and here are some of the things they promote: boys and girls sharing the same bathrooms, locker rooms, and even sports teams based on their feelings versus reality; Queen's bleeding story hour at local libraries or city-sponsored events; harassing, splandering, and adventing charges to two business owners with whole different beliefs than them, attempting to put them out of business; Chick-fil-A would be one of the bigger and more well-known examples, but there are many small businesses that are fighting these critics of lawsuits in court. These are just a few of the destructive and dangerous ideas and tactics being promoted and used by this group. Whatever causes me each person support is our prerogative, of course. However, painting the symbol on public property as such a visible location presumes we all support this ideology. I have nothing against anyone in this community. In fact, I trust the people that I know and regularly interact with from this community. We say I treat them with kindness and dignity. Personally, my goal is to treat people the way I want to be treated, as the human beings that they are. And the great thing is that when we do this, it actually includes everybody. And I think this is much more helpful and much less polarizing. I respectfully ask that you think over this roundabout as soon as possible so that all residents can feel welcome in our city. Sincerely, Julie Danielson. Thank you again for allowing me to participate.
Thank you, Julie, for your comments.
You go.
Executive Assistant Nguyen, do we have anybody else on the line?
Mayor, I do not have anybody else on the line.
Thank you. And then I will ask if anybody here in meeting, in person, excuse me, at our meeting right now is here for the open forum. And as a reminder, the open forum is an opportunity for the public to come and address the City Council. It's not an opportunity for back-and-forth discussion, but it is to come and talk to us, come and share your thoughts with us on any item that does not have a public hearing on the agenda. So is anyone here in person for the open forum? Okay, seeing as we have nobody here in person and no one on the phone line, I will close the open forum and move to the next item of our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of October 12, 2021, the City Council Meeting of October 12, 2021, and the Joint Council HRA and Planning Commission Work Session Meeting of October 18, 2021.
Supple, so moved.
Second.
The minutes have, the motion has been made to move the minutes by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Whalen. Any comments, questions on the approval of the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. So the next item on our council agenda is we have three presentations, and I'm super excited for our presentations tonight. So the first presentation is more information about the 16th Annual Great Pumpkin Giveaway and awarding an award to the coloring contest winners. So we do have Richfield business owner and community leader Steve Schneberger here to talk to us a little bit more about the annual event and also to present the awards to some of our winners that are here in person. So if you could come and stand and speak at the microphone, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council people, for allowing me to come here tonight and present these fun things that we sponsor, and I say "we," my name is Steve Schneberger. I'm with Kelly Williams, a local Realtor, and I team up with Dave and Lisa Hintermeister with Huntington Bank and in conjunction with the Richfield Parks and Rec Department. And this year, we had Carl Herman with State Farm team up and present our 16th Annual Pumpkin Giveaway. And we were fortunate this year to have Mayor Gonzalez serve as our honorary judge for the coloring contest. So tonight, we have two of our four winners here with us tonight, and we're hoping that Mayor Gonzalez might help us award the certificates to them. So we have four age categories. The first age category is five years old and younger, and the winner is Madeline Guzman Cruz, and she's here tonight. Do you want to step up? With your parents? Okay.
Can I sign this? An amazing job, it's for art work. So there was a ton of differences in the category of five years and younger, and this was the one.
To me, it just, I'm really excited. She's very excited. The day that she did her drawing, she was so proud of her drawing, and she was like, "Mom, I don't want to leave it." I was like, "It's okay, you don't have to leave it. We can take it home, put it in the fridge." And I was like, "But if you want to, we can put it in the box." And she kept on like, "It's because I love it, Mom." I'm like, "You did a great job." And then she's like, "I'll put it in the box." So I'm just, it's just, it means a lot. Thank you.
And our second winner who's here tonight with us is Mayella Landine, and she is in the 13-years-and-older category. So Mayella, you want to come up? And I'll have you sign this one as well.
Okay, now, this one was brought up in this particular category that had a small submission. Thirteen and older. And the thing that I liked is that you added stuff to it that wasn't there, which is put your own touches, like put hair and taking off. And then you even explained what happened to the various others.
And we had two people that could not come tonight because there's swimming and gymnastics and all kinds of things going on, but we still want to recognize the nine-to-12-year-old category, and that's Lucy Simonette. And then we also had the six-to-eight-year-old category, and that's Anna Ricketts. So we'll make sure to get them their certificates. And again, thank you so much, Mayor Maria, for judging the contest.
Absolutely. And I'm wondering, Steve, if you could just tell people a little bit more about the event. I think it was the 16th Annual Event. And just talk about how it's evolved over time, because I think it's an excellent example of something that has been led completely by community members here in Richfield that has just become a big, broader community event where people connect and people really look forward to it every year. So I'm super thankful that you and others have taken the initiative to do this, but it just shows the impact that, you know, doing something with your neighbors and building community can have for everybody.
Well, thank you. Yes, like Mayor Gonzalez said, this is, was our 16th year. And of course, it is a team effort. You know, it's 16 years ago, we bought, you know, maybe 50 pumpkins and put them in the park. We're at Fairwood Park over off of Logan, and just hoped and prayed that enough people would come and take them. And now it's evolved, and in the last, I'd say, four years, the City of Richfield has actually become a partner with us, the Parks and Rec Department, and they've kind of helped us take it to the next level. And so this year, we gave away 600 pumpkins. We had face painting, we had a photo booth, we had the coloring contest, and it turns out to be that people come to just really network amongst community members. The kids are playing, and it's not so much that it's about getting a pumpkin anymore. It's about being kind of involved with community and just connecting. So it's a really great event, and I'm happy to be part of it. And I'm just part of it. There's other people that do a lot of the work too. So, but thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Steve. And then I'll sign these, and if you would, if you're going to give them to the other participants, that would be awesome, and I included their pictures. But thank you so much to you for your leadership and to the folks who came, the winners today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any comments on this item before we move to the next presentation? Nope. All right. And if you guys want, you can leave after this. That's totally fine. You don't have to stay for the rest of our City Council meeting, or you can stay if you'd like. So the next item is the Friendship City Commission Annual Report given by Chair and former Mayor Marty Kirsch. So if Mayor Kirsch could please join us at the podium for the report.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The Friendship City Commission planned a trip to Costa Rica for the year of 2022. However, it's been canceled because of the State Department's recommendation that we don't do it this year. If there seems to be enough interest in the rest of the community, we will see if we can do it in the year 23. And our Ambassador, Cincy Mandel, is willing to continue working on that project. But we did homestays when we're down there for half of the time, and so those people down there would say, "Oh, I don't know if I want some strangers in our homes and so on." And so it appears that it's a smart move that we cancel this year and work for the next year. We participated in the Penfest, and it was our first opportunity to show off our new t-shirt. In the past, we've had t-shirts. We've run low on those, and so it was an opportunity to do a nice upgrade on our t-shirt. While we were there, we had some of the Friendship City trinkets on display, and probably the biggest thing was the coffee grinding machine. So children were having a good time in grinding up Costa Rican coffee beans and then pulling the tray out and smelling the first ground coffee. They thought that was quite a, quite a deal. We're still running short two youth for our commission, and we have, I think, probably for a couple of years already. So I don't know what we can do, but whatever the council and staff can do to find us two students, it would be appreciated. Paul Smithson is our city advisor, staff advisor, and we really, and I do especially appreciate Paul, you're getting into Costa Rica as well as you have. It's been a real pleasure to work with you, and he's doing a good job for it. So unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Kirsch. Any questions from councilmembers or comments? Councilmember Supple.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to thank all the commissioners and the chair and the staff for all the work they've been doing on the commission, and the shirts were great.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Marty Kirsch. Oh, I was just going to add again, just like councilmember said, thank you so much for chairing the group, and I'm sorry to hear that next year, the trip has been canceled. It makes sense, but hopefully, we can get another trip for the following year and also help with the youth commissioners. I know that that has been a struggle in the past couple of years with the pandemic for our other boards and commissions as well. So hopefully, that's something that we can help in securing. Thank you for your leadership, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have one last presentation. Before we get to the last presentation, I just wanted to welcome our scouts. I see we have a group of scouts here in the audience. Not to put you on the spot, but welcome. I don't know if you're here to just observe a City Council meeting or because you have nothing better to do, but thank you for coming. We welcome you here, and hopefully, you know, if this is your first time that you're here at the City Hall, welcome, and hopefully, it's not your last. And know that we appreciate your leadership as scouts. So I just wanted to say hello and welcome. Thanks for coming. And the last presentation is the Transportation Commission Annual Report given by Chair Wesley Denzer.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. The Transportation Commission met only in March, April, August, and September of this year. This is largely due to a lack of agenda as items and projects that fall under the purview of the Transportation Commission were either under construction or in a final design process. I'll just quickly go through what we did do during our meetings this year. In March, we welcomed new commission members, new Commissioner David Gepner and new Richfield Bike Advocate Liaison Jan Mathis. And we also at that March 2021 meeting elected our officers, myself as chair, and Husnia Brasley as vice chair. We received a redevelopment update from the Assistant Community Development Director Melissa Pullman and a public engagement process refresher, since it had been a while since we had met, and a 2021 infrastructure project update from the city staff. In April, we met to discuss the I-494 Airport to Highway 169 vision update and discussion of the Portland Avenue and 494 interchange design and the private property impacts. In August, we had our annual bylaw update. We discussed an engineering study with Will Wislow regarding Richfield Public School Safe Routes to Schools Coordinator. We had an update on various projects, including 494 to 169, discussion of the 35W 494 flyover ramp and access changes at Penn Avenue. We requested a joint meeting with City Council to discuss this interchange and discuss further. And then at our most recent meeting in September, we discussed the 494 to 169 project. We had a presentation by city staff regarding MnDOT's plans for the 35W 494 interchange and the logic behind the proposed access changes at Penn. There was discussion and a decision not to move forward with the request for the joint meeting. So that's the major updates from the Transportation Commission for this year. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Supple.
I just said, wanted to say it's been really cool to see all the things come to fruition that you've worked on for the last several years because you guys have had a lot of different initiatives going on. So thank you. It was like the underpass and some of that. It was great to see it happen.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember Whalen.
I was going to make a similar comment today. I hope, I know a lot of your time gets spent on what is a couple of years out, but I hope also sometimes you guys just like, look at pictures of what's already done and get happy about the impact you made on that. So thanks as always for your work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, then Councilmember Troutman.
Yeah, thank you, Wes. I've sat on many of your meetings previously as the bike person and the planning commission liaison, and more recently from the council role. And it's always great. It's always a great conversation. It's always really thoughtful. It almost understates the impact of the commission when you know how few times we've met it this year. It's been a really weird year, but it is, as others have said, it's so cool to see the work of the commission, so much planning, and there's so much doing now that's happening as a result of that work and a result of your work. So thank you, and I look forward to a great 2022.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say a particular thanks to you and all your colleagues. The Transportation Commission is not totally unique, but it's one of the commissions that requires a lot of thoughtful engagement ahead of time and hours reading and preparing and then receiving, you know, sometimes tough feedback from the community and, you know, dealing with complicated questions that really impact our city for generations. So I just wanted to say thank you and just recognize that, that unique and really important work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And I'll just echo the accolades that everyone up here is giving. Thank you for being such a strong leader on the Transportation Commission. Just to think about the work that you personally, but also the Transportation Commission have led in just a few years alone have been, you know, they've had generational impacts, will have generational impacts. And just to see, for example, Lyndale and how beautiful it is and how people, you know, I just remember all of us going through people really struggling with the roundabouts and some of the layout things. But the commission was just leading with that community engagement, community input. I love the model that you guys use for Sweet Streets, and it's won awards because it's such a strong community engagement model. But then looking at the underpass and the 494 project, and then how we are building equity and engagement into all of that work has really come from that partnership between the commissioners, the community, and the staff. So thanks for your leadership in rolling that, Wes. And even though it's odd to hear that you haven't had, you know, so many meetings like you usually do, it's kind of like, oh, yeah, that's because a lot of these big things have been, are being built or were built. So maybe there's a little sigh of relief there. But thanks for the leadership. It's a tough commission sometimes, and you guys have huge multimillion-dollar, multi-year projects to inform. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes our presentations. The next item is the approval of our agenda.
I would move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to move the agenda. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar that is read by City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. And on tonight's consent calendar, we only have one item, and it is consider the adoption of a resolution designating polling places for the 2022. I submit the consent calendar for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hayford O'Leary, move approval of the consent calendar.
Supple, second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any comments or questions on our one item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent calendar has been approved. The next item is the City Manager's report with City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the scouts came early today. It's group 262, am I getting that correct? And we gave them a tour with Councilmember Troutman. Excellent tour. They stumped me on a couple of questions. I'm still getting back to them. So thank you very much for visiting. I greatly enjoyed it. Tonight, I got, I have just two topics I wanted to give updates on. One is the pandemic. Over the last week, case rates in Bloomington and Edina have remained relatively steady, but Richfield's actually declined a bit. So I'm hoping that we continue to see that. The rates, though, for each city are still above the CDC categorization for high transmission. Case rates for five-to-11-year-olds continue to be high. And other than the five-to-11-year-olds, the, it's not any one category that's contributing to the high rate that's pretty evenly distributed. There is a bright spot. The vaccination rates between our white residents and our Hispanic residents has completely closed. Actually, Hispanics are a percentage point higher right now. It's virtually closed between white residents and Asian residents. It's three percentage points gap, but there's disparities remain between our white residents and our black. On organized polling, pollers continue to work on making corrections. On organized polling, pollers continue to work on making corrections, but it's greatly decreased. We continue to work with Waste Management and Republic to make sure that they have more timely responses to folk, so better customer service. We are also getting less calls and emails, so it's starting to calm down. We were really excited to learn that the initial rate of participation for organics is 19%, and that is increasing daily. And that is without all of the bills being out there. We are finding that when folks find out that it's a mandatory charge, that they're signing up for subscription. So we're pretty excited about that.
Great.
And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any comments or questions on the two items on the city manager's report? Councilmember Whelan.
I actually wanted to ask about, I know typically at the city manager report of the following meeting, we respond to comments during open forum. Given the, the comments we heard today being frankly discriminatory or disrespectful of certain members of our community, I, I don't feel that it's appropriate to, to say nothing about that. And I, I guess I would ask that, I don't, I don't have an easy answer now, but that we think about how we respond to that in the future. It's not the first time it's happened in an open forum that, yeah, comments are made that are not in line with our city's values and could be hurtful to other people listening. And I would like our, our meetings to not be a space that perpetuates that, but don't know the appropriate way to do that. So I would just ask that, if possible, we could consider options of, for how to, how to identify that, that people are still welcome to share their views, even if they are not in line with our city's values, but that I, I don't know that it's appropriate to let them stand unaddressed.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just wanted to say that occurred to me as well, what Councilmember Whelan just said. Obviously, we don't want to be censoring residents, they want to be able to feel free to talk to us about issues that are of importance, but I know particularly in other cities, it has been a problem where certain groups go time after time and say really malicious things that are targeted at minority groups, and it's, yeah, people should feel free within, within reason to be able to say what they think, but we don't need to let it stand without acknowledging that. So I appreciate his acknowledgement and thinking about how to keep it on an inclusive space, both for people who disagree and want to say that, and people who might be affected or hurt by those comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Other comments or questions? And then just like to add, thank you so much for bringing that up, Councilmember Whelan. I think your suggestion is a really good one, and especially as a council that has prioritized time and time again, leading with equity, that's a great kind of additional example or another way we can embed it, especially here in our city council meeting. So I appreciate that comment, and I definitely agree with you as well. Other comments or questions on the city manager's report? I would like to just say it's not often, unfortunately, that we hear that we have closed racial and health inequity gaps, and so to see that we are making progress and that those gaps are, are closing in some areas is awesome, and I hope to hear more updates like that. I know our school district has been recognized across the state and nationally for closing racial gaps in, in four-year graduation rates. And so I know that that's something that's so important to the whole city of Richfield and the whole community, but I was really happy to hear that report tonight, City Manager Rodriguez, and I hope, you know, we can continue to do work to say, what are we missing, or what do we need to do better to help close the gap between our Black and African-American residents and our white residents, so that we close those racial inequities across the board, at least in one area, which is COVID vaccination, and hopefully we continue to grow that into other areas as well. Other comments on the city manager's report? Okay, the next item is claims and payroll. Who would like to make the motion?
I can move claims and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item and the last item is hats off to hometown hits, and I will start with Councilmember Troutman.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I, I also wanted to, just have been thinking about what's a helpful way to respond to resident comments, and, and I just want to acknowledge our Arts Commission and take our hats off to our Arts Commission, because they painted our roundabout that way to communicate that we're a safe and affirming community. And I wish the FBI statistics on hate crimes reflected that we were and were not yet. And, and so that's a reality, and where we stand as a city and as a council is clear. And, and so without censoring anybody, we don't want to let comments like that go unanswered. And as a, as a person of faith, as a person coming from a faith community, I feel a particular obligation to be very clear and explicit on that point. So hats off to our, to our Arts Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to mention the snow emergency rules, which go into effect like November 1st. Actually, I don't remember the, the date of the effect, but the changes here, as many people know, is towing will only happen over four inches rather than two, and every resident should have received this mailer, both in English and Spanish, explaining why we're doing this, as well as the sort of temporary snow emergency parking areas that we're trying out. I'm really excited about this program. I thought staff did a great job explaining it, and certainly if any residents have opinions about it, this is something I'm really passionate about, so please give me a call, talk to me about it, and give our plow drivers a chance to do a great job like they have done, because I think we're all going to be really pleased with how it goes this year, and hopefully a lot fewer people who can't afford tickets will be getting tickets, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I was actually going to talk about commissions tonight, and Chair Kirsch beat me to it when he talked about the youth commissioners. We need youth commissioners on all of our commissions, and they are, those applications are open now, you can get them on the website. So if you live here in Richfield, it doesn't matter what school you go to, you can be going to Richfield High School, Watershed High School, Academy of Holy Angels, or anywhere around here is you can, but if you live in Richfield, you can be one of our youth commissioners, and we really need people to do that. The other commissions that are coming up for the adults are going to be having applications come up in December. So we mentioned the Art Commission that is doing things like the public art, like painting the roundabout and doing the poetry. So if you want to be part of that, you can join in on that. We had the Commission, the Transportation Commission and the Friendship City Commission report tonight. There's also the Charter Commission that just had their meeting, and that works on like the rules of how the city, like the constitution of the city or the charter. We have the Advisory Board of Health, there's the Community Services Commission, the Human Rights Commission, and also the Sustainability Commission, and I hope I haven't forgotten any. But please consider signing up for that, because you do make a difference and you help put forward the vision of our community. And as Councilmember Troutman said, the Arts Commission was just doing that, and, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. My one thing today is just to encourage all of our voters in town to make sure to vote. There's one more week to vote in the Richfield School Board elections this year. You can vote early here at city hall or on election day at your polling place, which again, in the last couple of years, may have shifted a bit as some of the schools were under construction. If you have any voting questions, you can check out, the easiest website to tell you is mnvotes.org. That's the Secretary of State's website. If you need to find your polling place or have questions about early voting, that will be on there. That's what I got.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. And then I will just say, last week, we had a great tour of Woodlake Nature Center here in Richfield. We were able to host House Representatives, Minnesota House Representatives from across the state to come and take a real-life tour of Woodlake Nature Center and host their bonding committee. So the city of Richfield is asking for statewide funds in support for a multimillion-dollar renovation and update of the state's oldest and longest nature center in Minnesota, which is Woodlake. And if you guys have gone to the, to Woodlake Nature Center, you know the building is old, and we would love and need a new building. So we wanted to bring our policymakers out into the community and show them the type of support that we needed. And the weather was amazing, our staff did an awesome job, and Director Markle did an exceptional job telling the story of Woodlake Nature Center, giving statistics of utilization and information about the center, but also pairing it with real life and personal stories. We had an awesome youth leader, leader there as well, who volunteers almost every single day at Woodlake, and we thought, what a better spokesperson than to ask him to talk about why he volunteers so much of his free time to Woodlake and the impact that it's had on his life. So I think our staff did a great job in, in hosting the tour. We had beautiful weather, and it was just such an honor. You know, we are competing with cities and communities across the state for funding and support, and to be able to actually get the representatives to come to your community and learn more about your request is a big deal. So very thankful to our city staff, to our lobbyists who helped us set that up, and to all of our representatives that, that attended. So that was a great event that we had last week. And that is all I have. So seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our meeting.